The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, December 7th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. This is our regular town council meeting. So, welcome to those who are listening and welcome to the town council members. The reason we're back to doing some of these Zoom meetings at this moment in time is there's lots of activity regarding the COVID virus and it was my thought that at least for the month of December, we will do our meetings via a Zoom platform and then reevaluate by the end of the month to see if in January things may be a little bit more positive for us to get back together in the council chambers. I hope that's agreeable with everybody? All right, okay, great. Thank you for your indulgence. So we'll just begin our meeting. On our agenda, we have no presentation or public hearing. So what I have next is to ask for approval of the previous meeting minutes. So may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the minutes from November 16th, 2020, regular meeting.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That takes care of that. The next item that we have is announcements and reports. And I just, I wanted this evening, I spoke to Robert Lee about this, just to acknowledge the passing of one of our former longtime employees with the town of Plainville, Carl Bratt, passed recently. He was hired at the town of Plainville on January 2nd, 1973, and he was hired as an Assistant of Public Works. In September of that year, he was appointed Acting Director of Public Works and later appointed to the position permanently. In September of 1993, he was appointed Director of Technical and Physical Services. In October of 1998, Carl retired after 26 years of service. So Carl was a longtime employee for the town of Plainville. I know many of you knew him personally. And I just wanted to extend my condolences and acknowledgement of his passing. He is survived by his wife, Angie. He also has a son, Kyle, and he has a daughter, Carol Zetegren, along with five grandchildren. And so, you know, again, he was a longtime employee, had a huge responsibility, and I would like to express my condolences to the family and those that were close to him. So that was, that takes care of, care of that piece of business. Next, I'm just slipping back to the agenda. Here we go. All right, sorry. All right. Does anybody else have any announcements or reports that they'd like to share this evening? No? Okay, moving on. Appointments and resignations. Do we have any appointments or reappointments to the boards and commissions tonight? I looked at our list and there are some appointments that are due for some boards and commissions, and they're due now, some of them later in the month. So perhaps at our next meeting, those of you who have liaison assignments, if you could take a look at them and we'll make those appointments at our mid-December meeting, please. There's several out there that we should probably be taking care of this month. So if there are no other appointments to boards and commissions, I will go over to, down to item number eight, report to the town manager. Mr. Lee, I'll turn it over to you right now.
Thank you. And before I begin my report, Dan, can you see where Shane Lockwood has called in on the phone?
Yep, I can, I can let him, let him talk. I'll enable that right now.
Yeah, I'm gonna let him talk towards the end of my report, but yes, if you can unmute him for the moment and we'll go from there. Okay.
And I'll put your PDF on the screen in a moment.
Okay, whenever you're ready. First item I have is treated and non-treated salt, road salt bids. The roadways department is seeking town council approval to purchase both treated and non-treated winter salt materials. Typically, non-treated salt is utilized in warmer conditions above 17 degrees Fahrenheit, while treated salt is used in temperatures below 17 degrees. So the first item I have is the untreated salt. Town staff is recommending the purchase of non-treated salt from Champion Salt of Maryland Heights, Missouri, at a cost of $58 per ton. Champion Salt was the low bidder through a state bid process. The price per ton is is $1, $1.75 per ton less than what was paid last year. Last year, we paid $59.75 a ton. And the second item is treated salt. And town staff is recommending the purchase of treated salt from DRVN Enterprises of Weathersfield, Connecticut, for a cost of $63.50 per ton. This is a negotiated price, which is also $8 per ton less than last year's price. That was approved by the town council. And there are two items under new business regarding the purchase of the non-treated and treated salt as recommended by town staff. I don't know if anybody has any questions with respect to that particular recommendations? Are those particular recommendations? All right, I'll move on to the EverSource Gas Replacement and Expansion Project. Earlier this summer, EverSource Gas notified the town staff that they were planning to make some substantial upgrades to their distribution system in Plainville over the next 10 years. This was immediately concerning to us because their plans included replacing gas lines on recently and in recently paved streets. The last five years, town staff has annually contacted the utility companies, including EverSource, requesting their future construction plans in order to avoid a situation where a town road was dug up shortly after being repaved. And no time did EverSource Gas inform town staff of their plans until this summer. When these plans were received, town staff immediately contacted them to express our displeasure, notifying them that they would have to make some adjustments to the replacement schedule. We have had several meetings with EverSource representatives, and some changes have been made to the schedule. For example, EverSource planned to replace the gas lines on Whitey Street in 2026. However, the town is planning extensive work in this road next year after receiving a state grant. As a result of these discussions, EverSource agreed to perform this work beginning next spring before we begin our project. We will continue to meet with EverSource to refine the construction timelines and the methods for pavement restorations, especially on newly paved roads. In addition, EverSource has stated that they plan to move forward with extending gas line or gas service on Redstone Hill Road and the neighborhood that includes Hollyberry Lane, Skyline Drive, and Highland Drive. This was originally discussed with town staff about 18 months ago, but their plans were delayed. The expansion work is expected to begin early next year. Knows if there's any questions or comments with regards to the EverSource?
Madam Chair?
Right ahead.
Yeah, just one quick question for the town manager. I know in the Cleveland street area, for some reason, the gas line doesn't actually go all the way through Cleveland Street. It stops at Usher Ave. Is there any opportunity to discuss whether or not they plan to bring the gas line all the way into the neighborhood? I think 2024 was the year they had that particular neighborhood on their list. But I'm just throwing that out there as another, a couple residents had asked that question of me, and I told them I'd forward that on.
I spoke to one person who lives on the corner of Rush, Usher in Cleveland.
Yep.
About extension, and then I spoke to EverSource. And they indicated that they have no plans to extend at this point in time. And we are, you know, what I indicated to them that we would revisit this when they, when they, you know, replaced the lines because
Got closer.
This particular one was so close to them. I'm not sure that they would continue down the road, though.
Yep.
My recommendation would be that, that they perhaps solicit people on the street that would, you know, to document they're interested in the gas instead of hearing it anecdotally.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And, you know, if they could, you know, if there's, you know, 10 houses on the road and all 10 people want the gas, or eight out of 10, that would be important to know.
Okay.
But I'm gonna work hard to try to get it on, at least to get that corner house, which is not that far to go to get to the
Right, right. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. And I know that there was, I was contacted by another, another resident who lives, and Mr. Underwood, you, on Robidoux, who said that there were some people who live on that street who were looking to perhaps get gas. And I did, I did have some conversations with that gentleman and referred him to EverSource, somebody there that he could speak to and also document, you know, how many people they were talking about. Gas comes up to the condos behind, you know, that street, as you may be aware. So, so people are
They do know that most in their neighborhood, Robert would love to have the gas line.
Yeah. Yeah, so. I think that as they replace the lines, you know, that's, you know, more of an opportunity to, you know, for possible, you know, extensions nearby. Next item I have is the Robertson Airport update. There are several projects underway at the airport. The reconstruction of the taxiway is being done by Tilcon and is about 90% complete. This is a $2.72 million project that is being paid through a grant provided by the FAA. And that's being paid 100% by the FAA. We were fortunate enough to get full funding for that project. So that will save us, you know, what our share would have been. Additionally, the town has made some improvements to the airport facilities utilizing monies from the airport fund. Improvements that have already been made include the painting of three hangars, which also includes the administration building, which is attached to one of the hangars, and the replacement of several heating and cooling units. The town is also looking to replace the metal roof on Hangar Four that currently has some leaks and has reached its useful life. Interstate Aviation and the town have also agreed to make improvements to the administration building. The interior floor plan is, is being modified by Interstate. The airport fund will contribute some of the exterior work, including new windows and doors, and a new handicap accessible ramp to the, for the main entranceway. The plans also include improvements to an adjacent patio area, which will allow residents to have a place to observe the airfield. You know, as you may be aware, there are people who regularly go to the airport, sitting in cars or, you know, sit outside of, you know, on a chair and have lunch and observe the airplanes coming in and out. Interstate and the town, we would like to make a nice patio area where people can actually sit down at a table, maybe under an umbrella, and, you know, be more comfortable while they, you know, if they want to come up and see, you know, the operation of the airport, planes flying in and out. Interstate is also planning to construct a small café inside the administration building. The improvements to the administrative building are expected to begin during the winter months with the replacement of Hangar Four roof to occur next spring. So a lot of work is planned up there, improvements. And I just want to emphasize that the funds being used to make those improvements are coming from the airport fund, which is monies that have been accumulated over the last 10 years as a result of the leasing of the airport and does not include, does not include, you know, funds coming from the town's general fund. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Robert, I'd like to just say that, well, I think it's great they're doing all kinds of improvements to the airport. I'm still getting complaints from residents that Interstate refuses to maintain the grass, the grounds. And it generally looks bad, waist-high weeds growing through the cracks. You know, the lawn's not mowed from time to time in the warm weather. And just in general, while we're improving, you know, they could plan for a lawnmower and a weed whacker to help cleave the grounds, looking nice. I mean, if we're gonna build an area for people to observe the airfield or improve an area for people to observe the airfield, they should be cleaning up the grounds as well. And I hope that's something we can get them to attend to in the next year.
We'll try to keep a better eye on that and, you know, and make sure that that gets taken care of.
Thank you.
Next item I have is town clerk position. Town Clerk Carol Scoltedi, who's on the call as well, recently announced her plans to retire in January. Carol has worked for Plainville since 1998, first serving as the Deputy Revenue Collector, and then becoming the Deputy Town Clerk before being appointed as the Town Clerk after Peter Lennon retired in 2003. Seventy-four applicants expressed interest in the town clerk's position. On November 12th, eight candidates were interviewed by a panel consisting of Carol, Stacy Buden, and James Kropinski, Kroprienski, I think it is, who currently serves at the Newington Town Clerk. The interview panel unanimously recommended Cindy Perini of Bristol as a top candidate for the position. Ms. Perini is a certified town clerk and is currently serving as the Assistant Town Clerk in West Hartford, a position that she has held since 2014. Before that, she served in the Bristol Town Clerk's office in several supporting capacities for 14 years. A final interview with myself and Stacy Buden was held on December 3rd, just last week. And pursuant to the town charter, I am pleased to announce that I have appointed Cindy Perini to serve as the Plainville Town Clerk beginning on January 4th. This will allow some overlap time with Carol Scoltedi to acquaint her with the office. You know, and I do want to thank Carol for 20-plus years of dedicated service to the town of Plainville and wish her well in her retirement, although she will be the town clerk through about the middle, you know, to the beginning of January. So, you know, she's not leaving quite yet, but it's getting closer and closer, so. Next item I have is the capital improvement, additional appropriation. The fiscal year 21 capital improvement budget anticipated that $980,000 would be contributed from the town's unassigned fund balance to support the approved projects. According to the town charter, the town council is required to conduct a public hearing before considering an additional appropriation. The town charter also requires a referendum where, whenever any additional appropriation exceeds 1% of the town budget. As a result, in order to appropriate $980,000 from the unassigned fund balance, two supplemental appropriations will be required in order to avoid the expense of conducting a referendum. There is an item under new business establishing a public hearing from Monday, December 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM to receive public comment regarding the appropriation of $490,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the capital improvement fund. And a second appropriation will be planned later this year. I do want to point out that this was discussed, you know, fairly extensively during the budget process, the capital improvement plan, the total amount of projects to be funded, and where the monies would come from. So, you know, and, and that was all part of the budget-making process. But in order to do, get money from the unassigned fund balance into the general fund requires, you know, the, you know, official additional appropriation. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the next item, which is the fiscal year 22 budget discussion. Town staff is currently making plans for the development of the fiscal 22, fiscal year 22 town budget. One of the first steps in the budget process is a joint meeting with the town council and the Board of Education. During this joint meeting, both the town and school administrative staff update both boards on the status of the current budget year and the projected budget assumptions and expectations for next year, which is always pretty tricky to do in this economic environment. This meeting is generally held in mid-January. And given the current pandemic, this meeting most likely be held, would be held remotely via video conferencing. Just throwing out two suggested dates, although there can, you know, be other dates if necessary. One is Tuesday, January 12th, or the following Tuesday, which would be the 19th. The council meets on Mondays. And, and the Board of Education meets on Mondays as well. So I don't know if either of those two dates work, either or both, and we could check with the Board of Education, or certainly you can suggest other dates as well. Okay, sounds like both, no objections to those meetings, so we'll see what we can, we can set up. Next item I have is the, is a COVID-19 update. I'm gonna say a few words and then I'll turn it over to Shane Lockwood, who is the Regional Director of Health. At the current time, the municipal center, library, and senior center are open to the public. Senior Center is open mostly by either appointment or you have to, you have to sign up in advance. But additionally, the schools are also conducting, you know, in-person, in-school learning as well. Over both state and local health officials continue to report that more COVID-19 infections and the increase in hospitalizations. Some town staff in the sewer department, buildings and grounds, roadways, police department, senior center, and the municipal center have had to quarantine as a result of contact tracing. School staff has also been impacted as well. To date, town operations have continued with some minor impacts, but this certainly could change very quickly. Town staff will continue to monitor the pandemic and follow the recommendations of the health officials. What I'd like to do now is, is turn the meeting over to Shane Lockwood to make a few comments about the plans for the, you know, distribution of vaccines, as well as, you know, what he may, may be able to anticipate. We may be able to anticipate it over the next, you know, couple of months before the vaccines become available. So, so Shane, I don't know if you want to say a few words, and then if the council has any questions, maybe you could respond to them as well?
Sure. Thank you for having me on to be able to talk about the pandemic. As Tom Manager mentioned, we've seen an increase in cases, not just in the health district or in Connecticut, but throughout the country. This was expected. I know for Connecticut, a lot of the projections show the peak of this wave being sometime in mid-January, which makes sense. We saw the, the increase after Thanksgiving, and we expect the same type of increases with the gatherings around the holidays. For the most part, we still see that the greatest spread of this is small family gatherings or gatherings with family and friends. But it was a pretty significant increase over the past two months, but it's pretty much in line with what we're seeing at state and nationwide. As the town manager also mentioned, we're seeing an increase in hospitalizations. One, I guess, one positive is compared to the spring, what we saw with the hospitalizations were when people wound up in the hospital, large majority then went straight to ventilators and ICU. What we're seeing now is it's a lot more manageable. Myself and the town manager on a call weekly with Hartford Healthcare, and they have bed space, they have, and they had a lot of positives as far as when people showing up. They're, they're certainly not in the same condition as they were in the spring. So that's, that's positive for, for our hospitals. As far as vaccine, I'm, I'm impressed right now with the projections going forward. As someone who was Deputy Director of Health in 2009 for H1N1, at that time when the vaccine became available, for the most part, we are looking at getting 10, 20 doses a week. And that continued for, for a long time. The numbers that they're talking about being released even by the end of December throughout the country are impressive. They're looking at, I was just at 5 o'clock, I was on a call with the White House briefing office for local and state health officials, and at that time, they estimated that there will be over 40 million doses just available in December alone. So we're working closely with the state of Connecticut on our vaccine plan. There's gonna be priority groups set by the federal and state government for, for this. And we will work closely within those groups to get vaccinations out to, based on the priority of those groups. So I think really the, the state has an excellent plan for, for putting this into play, and we're ready for once vaccines are available locally. As I mentioned, we're still seeing the spread in the small gatherings. So as always, I'd like to remind people to, to wear the masks as much as possible, even at home or around, if they're at home around friends, really around your family members, you're okay. But if you're out in public, if you're at work, if you're around friends, make sure you wear a mask. Try to keep that six feet of social distancing, and then obviously wash your hands. And then the other big one I'd like to stress right now is if you're sick, stay home. It's tough. I think a lot of people have, or are sick of staying home, but the holidays are around us. But again, if you're sick, the most important thing you can do right now is do that self-quarantine at home. On some positives, I think our businesses are doing a phenomenal job with this. If you look around the country, you see a lot of issues as far as people pushing back on capacities, mask wearing, any of the public health guidelines. And we've had very, very few issues in the district. Our businesses are really complying with their governor's guidelines. We talk to them frequently, we send emails out, call them, fax them, just really keep them up to date. And I'd say 99% of them are very positive when it comes to the comments with it. Same thing with the schools. I think our schools are doing a terrific job, especially the school nurses. They've been conducting that contact tracing. I talk to this superintendent probably three times a week. He's also on a conference call with myself and the town manager every Tuesday morning where we speak. So I think we have a good working relationship with schools, and I stand by all their decisions that they made so far. And I also want to compliment the municipal workers. As Robert mentioned, there's been a big impact based on contact tracing of people having to, to self-quarantine at home. And for most part, I've always heard of others in the department really stepping up and taking care of it. While it's tough, I haven't heard of any significant impacts as far as customer service. I think everybody's done a really nice job with this and adjusting as it's gone forward. But that's my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Shane, this is Kathy. I have a quick question for you. Has there any been, any discussion or do you foresee any events such as what happened in March where the governor did a hard shutdown and everybody was pretty much remanded at home with very few people being exempt from that? Is there any discussion at, if we get to a certain level of virus activity or anything else that might require that to happen?
No, I haven't heard that. And in fact, what I keep hearing out of the governor's office there's no plans to roll back even further from 2.1. I know the two big concerns were a lot of restaurants and gyms. And they said unless, unless the situation changes dramatically, they don't plan on any changes. So I think they're, they're pretty satisfied where they are right now.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Shane or comments regarding this all exercise?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Shane what he thinks the impact will be of the, I believe, you know, the modified quarantine guidelines where, you know, you don't have to do 14 days. I believe it's seven or 10, Shane, but then get tested.
Yep.
Is that, are people aware of that, or are they doing that? What do you think the impact of that would be?
Sure. So the, the CDC came out last week and made some modifications to self-quarantine. In the past, it was a pretty simple 14-days self-quarantine. What they switched it to were 10-days or seven-days with testing. In both these situations, the person would have to be symptom-free throughout the entire self-quarantine. So the, the two options now would be you could self-quarantine for seven days. After day five, you could get tested. And when, once that test comes back and you're, and you're negative, you could end quarantine after seven days. It has to be that PCR test, which is a longer test.
Right, right, right.
But one of the, one of the problems is right now, we're probably looking at three to four days at a minimum for test results. So I don't know how much that's actually gonna have a huge impact right now. Because if you get tested after day five and it takes four days, you might be able to end quarantine after day nine rather than day 10. The other option is you just do 10-days, and as long as you're symptom-free for all the 10-days, then you could then you could end quarantine. And this is based on just, we know so much more about the virus now than we did in, in March. Of what we've seen is that by ending it at day 10 instead of 14, that about 1% of cases happen between day 10 and day, and day 14. So, they're saying scientifically, it's better to, to reduce it to lessen the impact on everyone's life for that 1% of cases. They've also seen that they, between day seven and day 10, about 4% of cases happen. So, again, as long as there's that testing done, if they're willing to take that, that low risk with it. We've heard people, but I think, I think people are happy with the reduction from 14 to 10. I think the seven-day gets a lot tougher because of that testing requirement and the length of time it takes to get the results back.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Shane.
I would point out, Rosemary, that as it relates to town or school employees, that when, through contact tracing, we find out that there, you know, people have to be quarantined. We do give them direction, and we've, we're giving them the updated direction that we're getting from the CDC as quarantine requirements, so.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Shane? Okay, thank you so much, Shane. We appreciate your expertise.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, he's very busy nowadays. I'll tell you, we're, he's on phone calls all day following, you know, the changing conditions, and it's not easy to keep up sometimes. So, I appreciate all the work of the Regional Health District staff, and particularly led by Shane, and I think they're doing a great job, and we, we certainly benefit by being a member of this, this regional group all the way around, so. Thank you, Shane, as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The other, next item I have is happenings. You know, we, we do have some happenings occurring in town, so I'm going to let Matt pick up on that, and then when he's done, we'll, we'll both be available to answer some questions or respond any comments you have for us. So, go ahead, Matt.
Good evening. Thank you. This is a relatively short week for happenings. Town offices, we wanted to note the closure next, this coming Thursday, December 24th, and Friday, December 25th. December 24th, it'll be closing at 11:30, and that's the result of the holiday. The same schedule will be for the following week for New Year's. The Holiday Gift Drive, this year, instead of stuff a cruiser toy drive that you might have been used to seeing at the Lowe's Plaza, Plainville Police and Coordination with the Plainville Social Services Department are sponsoring Rescue Christmas on behalf of the Plainville Salvation Army. And this is in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. There's been some modifications. This year, they are working to collect in the Police Department lobby gift cards and monetary donations, but not toys. Social Services Department, working with Plainville Youth Services, school staff, and the community will work to distribute those gift cards to needy in town. Donations in any amount are gladly accepted. Senior Center continues to be open, as we mentioned. COVID-19 drive-through testing is available Tuesday, December 15th. I apologize for the typo there, and that will be the drive-through. So, again, December 15th, 9:00 to 1:00, that will be drive-through. No need to get out of your car. This is what has continued in recent months. Other highlight events include grandparents raising grandchildren, the support group. That continues on a monthly basis. The Super Supes Cooking Class continues this month with wedding soup. And then there are several drive-through events, one for a dog and kitty photo opportunity, a drive-through Chocolate Lover's Day, and a historical house tour, you know, done digitally at the Senior Center. With that, that's all I have, and I turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt and Robert, for your reports. I'll ask if any of council members have any questions or comments regarding the reports that Town Manager or Matt provided with us this evening? Okay, great. Thank you both very much for the information you provided. Moving along our agenda right now, we're going to be, there's no old business. We'll move into the new business section of our meeting, so I will ask for a motion, please, for item number one.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tom.
Motion to, motion to accept bid number 2021-09, non-treated road salt bid. I don't have the amount in my notes here. Oh, for, oh, under state contract number 20PSX0085 to Champion Salt, Maryland Heights, Missouri, in the amount of $58 per ton.
Madam Chair, Dave Wender with seconded that motion.
Thank you both. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair? Motion to, motion to waive the bid process for bid number 2021-10, treated road salt in award to DVR Enterprises Weathersfield, Connecticut, in the amount of $63.50 per ton.
I have a second, please. I got a second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Nice to see both of these coming in less than previous years, I have to say. Always good. There's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three.
Madam Chair? Motion to establish a public hearing for Monday, December 21st, 2020, at 7:00 o'clock to hear public comment regarding an additional appropriation of $490,000 to the Capital Projects Fund.
Madam Chair, seconded that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Madam Chair? Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
You have a second, please?
Seconded.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, thank you for that. We have our next section, which, which is other discussions of interest. I'll ask, does anybody have anything they would like to offer at this point?
I have one, one item, Kathy, if that's okay. This is Robert. The governor is considering an order that would extend the time that taxpayers would have to pay the second portion of their tax bill without penalty, rather than for 30-days, you know, from January 1st to 90-days. There is some discussion about whether that would be for everyone across the board, or whether it would be upon request, similar to what the town did, what the Town Council approved for the July payments. And we had 78, 79, up to maybe 80 people who took advantage of that. So, it's unclear as to whether it's going to be across the board or on request. We certainly would push for it to be on request because it allows us to know who, who didn't pay because they couldn't afford to do it, as opposed to those who generally don't pay because they just don't pay for a period of time until they have to. And so, if it's on request, I just wanted to check with the council to see if that would be accepted, you know, if it was given up to the towns to decide, you know, whether to do this or not, whether the council would, would, would be supportive of doing what we did in Ja, in July or January. You know, so that's really, you know, because I, we would not want to wait until the second meeting in, in December if the, if the governor says it's at the option of the towns. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. I, I would assume that that would be acceptable. I would, I will say that one of the, they would not extend the date for, for any of the payments that are made, you know, by the banks. So, so, so they would not allow those. So, these would be for individual tax payments that are made, that are due in January. I wanted to throw that out there.
I'm okay with the process you used back for the July payments. If the governor permits us to have that discretion, I think that worked out well, did it, from what I recall?
Yes, yes. We sent regular, we sent regular reminders to those who, who signed up, and, and that, you know, if they, if they forget that date, then they owe three months of delinquent interest as opposed to, you know, one or two if they're, you know, a couple of days late. So, you know, that, that's why, you know, I favor people at least asking, because then we know who's, you know, who to contact, so.
Anybody else on board with that approach?
I would agree with that approach.
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree also.
All right, that's the only, that's the only additional item that I had.
Okay, I have one item, which I should have probably put under my reports, but here it is. We're not going to get away without hearing about this. This is just a reminder that the Chamber of Commerce, the Fire Department, Park and Recreation, and the Police Department in coordination are going to sponsor a drive-through Santa visit this coming Friday, December 11th, at Norton Park, beginning at 6:00 PM. Those who wish to come and, and see Santa should arrive by 5:45 PM. How this is going to work is we're asking those that wish to participate to come to the park, and there will be areas to park your vehicle. You need to stay in your vehicle. And there'll be a little parade that will be driving by, by the parked vehicles. There'll be Santa and Mrs. Claus. There'll be a fire truck in the parade. There'll be other cars in the parade, and of course, this is all dependent upon the weather. And the reason we're doing it, this is happening this year, is we cannot have our usual gathering at the firehouse due to COVID concerns, where folks gather outside the firehouse, and Santa comes, and we turn on the lights, and then the children and families go inside. It's just not feasible this year. So, in, in light of the fact that that can't happen, the chamber wanted to do something, at least bring some spirit of the holiday, and they came up with this drive-by Santa approach. I think it'll be fun. I'm hoping the weather will be cooperative, and families can just come to the park. They will be instructed as to where they can park. Santa will be, cannot be, by the way, in the fire truck due to COVID restrictions. You cannot also ride outside the fire truck, but he will be in the back of a big pickup truck, and it'll be elevated, so all, you'll be able to see him quite well. And he's going to, there's going to be a pass all the way through the park and back onto South Washington Street, and come back into the park a second time. So, there'll be two passes of Santa coming by to see the children and the families. I think it'll be fun. It's just unfortunate we can't do the tree lighting as we had in the past, but, you know, this is an attempt just to provide something for families and for, for our little ones to come and see Santa. So, I invite you all to be there. If you would like to be in the parade, let me know. That can be arranged. You can walk in the parade with the, you know, alongside one of the other vehicles, or just walk along. You can wear your elf hats and whatever you feel like. But the chamber has, has worked for a long time to put this together. I think it'll be fun. And again, I'm just announcing tonight for anybody listening and letting the council know that you are certainly welcome to participate as well. Any questions? Okay, well, I guess I'll see you there in your elf shoes. All right. Okay, let's see. I think that was the end of it. Robert, you, you already gave yours, your report, so we do not have an executive session scheduled for this evening, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn, unless anybody else has anything to offer.
Madam Chair, motion adjourned.
Thank you. I have a second?
Seconded that motion.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Appreciate your, your patience with having to do these Zoom meetings, but hopefully we'll be out of the woods by January, and we'll be able to get back and together again. Thank you again.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye, everyone.